I call the City Council Special Formal Meeting to order for March 20th, for March 3rd, 2020. We're gonna, item number two is purchase of a, sale of real estate. Could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss?
Bruce, roll call.
Oh, sorry. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Salee?
Kia.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, thank you. Item number two, purchase or sell of real estate. Could I get a motion to adjourn to the executive session to discuss the purchase or sell of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. The minutes and the tape recording of a session close on this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed.
So moved. Seca?
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Salee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will be back. So for the, those of you who are joining us, we just adjourned, we just had an executive session, and so, item number three, could I get a motion to adjourn from the executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Mims.
Seca?
Seconded by Salee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. We are going to go into our work session for Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, here at City Hall. And the first item is Historic Preservation Year in Review. Hello?
Hi. I'm Jessica Bristow. I'm the Historic Preservation Planner. And, um, thank you for your time. I'm here to go through our annual report that we submit to the state for the activities of our Historic Preservation Commission for the calendar year of 2019. They do have us report everything on a calendar year instead of a fiscal year, just so you're I'll just provide you with a little bit of background, just generally, um, the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 established a nationwide program, basically to encourage preservation and the wise use of historic resources. This act also established the National Register of Historic Places, where properties or neighborhoods could be listed as historic resources. It also established the State Historic Preservation Office. Finally, in 1980, an amendment to that act created the Certified Local Government Program, of which we participate. This program encourages historic preservation at the local level. It also encourages local governments, like ours, to use the Secretary of, Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. These are good practices, acts, suggestions, guidelines for professional qualifications as well. The Certified Local Government Program also provides technical assistance through the State Historic Preservation Office. We call it SHIPO. And they also provide funding opportunities for historic preservation activities. We have always done an annual report. They've changed the reporting procedures so that it is more digital, and part of that requirement is that we present to council. In the past, we have provided you with a, a document that was our report, so that's what has changed. In Iowa City, we have a large quantity of properties that are regulated. We have eight historic districts. They comprise 689 properties. In Iowa City, we have these districts that are locally designated, but they are also all listed on the National Register of Historic Places in some form or another. Sometimes they're combined or separated out. We also have a local designation for a local conservation district. These are not associated in any way with the National Register. These have 806 total properties. And we also have 59 individual local landmarks. Some of these, about 45 of them, are also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. There are also, in Iowa City, some individual buildings that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places that are not local landmarks, just to make that distinction. This map, just so you're aware, shows a little bit of an overlay of those historic districts and conservation districts, and all the red dots are the local landmarks. Some general information that we include as part of the report, this information is all towards the end of the report. We have a commission of 12 individuals. Two seats are open. They tend to be small districts that are hard to get commissioners to represent them. We had 13 Historic Preservation Commission meetings this year, 11 regular meetings, and two special meetings that we called at the request of owners of properties. We work with a budget of about $44,200 plus an owner, a property owner incentive that we have. The budget is worked out to the mailing that we do annually to property owners to let them know about our work, also some travel and training funding. Miscellaneous consultations would be if we needed to hire someone to research something for us, and then our staff cost. Our Historic Preservation Fund, I'll talk about a little bit more, but later on, it's One of the activities that we do as a commission, as part of this Certified Local Government Program, is that we locate historic properties, we evaluate them, and we do some registration activity, which means working on nominating them to the National Register of Historic Places. This year, we did three projects that were called an intensive survey. That's where we investigate that property and its history, really in detail, to discover whether or not it would be eligible for the National Register, and therefore also possibly eligible for local landmarking. One of them was the property at 2040 Waterfront Drive, which you see a photo of right there, the house. It was built in 1855 through 1868. We had a grant from this program in order to do that intensive survey. We also investigated both 225 North Gilbert and 229 North Gilbert at the request of council to see if they could be local landmarks, and we completed that survey and did do that process for those two houses. Also, along the lines of identification and evaluation, another grant we received from the Certified Local Government Program was the National Register nomination for the Clinton Street and Railroad Depot Historic District. This is the district that runs along Clinton Street for about a block and a half, just north of the railroad tracks and the depot. I have a map of it on the last slide, just so you're aware, but the National Park Service did determine that this district would be eligible for listing in the National Register. Because of owner objection, they just sent us that determination, and it won't be listed unless the owners remove their objection. We did two projects that were kind of an evaluation of structures. We had the St. Say Gilmore House at 109 Market. We hired a consultant in order to look at that property structurally and evaluate the possible relocation of that property. We also got a grant from the Certified Local Government Program to evaluate the Summit Street Monument. That's the monument that forms the southeast corner of the original plat of Iowa City. It's located at the corner of Summit and Court Street, and it's deteriorated enough that we needed to look at how it's deteriorating and what are the possibilities that we could do to help with that structure. The state also has us, um, report to them back anything that we do locally for our designation process as well. And we did have five properties that became local landmarks this year. Three of those were already listed on the National Register of Historic Places and were city-owned. And so, we locally designated them, just to make that a little bit more clear to the public and to provide a good example. They include the City Park cabins, the Senior Center, the original Iowa City Post Office, or old post office, and the Ned Ashton House. And then, of course, the houses at 225 and 229 North Gilbert also became local landmarks. When the commission is working on actually protecting and preserving and managing the historic resources, a lot of that has to do with the technical assistance that they provide. Commission and staff both work on preservation projects. We like for applicants or property owners to come to us early in the process, so we can work through what might be the most appropriate actions to take on their particular project. We provide resources on property history, contractors who might specialize in tasks that it's difficult to find contractors to do, materials that might be historic materials or new materials that they might be able to use. We provide direction or options on project design, if they need help interpreting the guidelines, or if they just need help figuring out the best move to make on their project. And then, we review applications and suggest modifications if needed. I included a little bit of our review data here. We get calls and inquiries about properties. Some of these become applications that we then review formally. Some of them are just inquiries. Somebody wants to know something about a house, or what all of the possibilities might be in a property. This year, we had 198 inquiries. Last year, we had 160, and this has been increasing significantly each year. The increase in 2019 over 2018 was 24 percent. We also had 98 applications for historic review. That's everything from an addition, or maybe even a demolition, to the need to repair something and issuing a certificate of no material effect. Our Historic Preservation Fund, which was a new thing we implemented in 2017, we haven't really reported yet about, so this is kind of a new, a new reporting, and, and what we show here is, over the, all of the time that, since we've had this fund, we had, have had the 20 projects that you see, one from 2017, 11 from 2018, and then, in this reporting year, eight of them. Our project types tend to be repairs, replacement of deteriorated things, rebuilding something that's missing. And it was interesting for us to look at what districts those projects came from, and that's what the pie chart is showing you, that of those 20, three of them came from College Green, six of them from Longfellow. That was just something that, that we found kind of interesting there. The way the fund works is that an eligible property, a property owner can have work done, where they would then be reimbursed for 50 percent of the project costs through a loan or a grant from the city. They pay the other 50 percent. It's a grant if they're below an income level, or if, well, and if they also own and live in that property. If it is an income property or above the income level, it is a loan. We also are involved in public education. One of our biggest events is the Historic Preservation Awards, and that's the one I'll highlight here. The awards for 2018 was done last January. We had 19 awards for properties and individuals. Some of the categories are paint and exterior finishes, different levels of rehabilitation, new construction, addition, stewardship for long-term care of a home, and other projects such as that. And I also wanted to point out that our award ceremony for 2019 will be this May 7th at 5:30 PM at the library. We start with little refreshments at 5 o'clock, and it is one hour and no longer than that. One of our, our big projects that we've been working on for a while now, actually, was the civil rights grant that we got through the National Park Service. This project was completed in 2019. We successfully nominated and had listed in the National Register of Historic Places, the Tate Arms at 914 South Dubuque Street, and the Iowa Federation Home for Colored Girls at 942 Iowa Avenue. Part of the grant from the National Park Service also was involved with putting signage at the location. It's, it's always good to do that if you can, because that, that house really represents that history in a visual way, especially if you can read about it while you're there on site. We created a city webpage that provides more information and some other sources for information if people want to look into it further. And it's continuing to allow us to provide public education through talks and other things such as that. The annual report also includes a section on both challenges and successes, and so, we report those as well. And some of the commission challenges that we've had over the past year were, the, the house at 109 Market, the St. Say Gilmore House, that its future is a little bit uncertain. We have our National Register Historic District for Downtown. A consultant is currently writing that nomination, and it'll move through the process and hopefully be reviewed by the National Park Service towards the end of the year. But we had one of the houses, or one of the buildings that would have been a contributing structure in that historic district that was just recently taken down, and, and so that's another hard thing, that when you're moving forward on a historic district, and those resources might change or, or no longer exist. And then, we also have the, the commission has a priority for increased staff time, not only to continue with their priorities and work plan, but to keep up with the current caseload. The commission successes, we've really had a good rollout over the last couple of years with Historic Preservation Fund. We've used it a lot to keep windows in good repair and out of the landfill, to replace porches that no longer exist, to repair and replace roofing materials that are a little bit more unusual. And the public seems to like the fact that while we have guidelines, we also can help with some funding as well, when some of those projects come up. The National Register, letting us know that that district that you see here in this map now is eligible for the National Register was also something that we really were looking forward to, and that was a good success. We had a long time wanted to have those city-owned properties listed locally, as well as on the National Register, so that was also a big success for us. And continuing the, the work that we did with the civil rights grant is also something that we consider a big success. So, that's all I have.
Any questions or comments?
You, you'd mentioned that you were looking for additional staff time. What, what, what did you have, and what are you looking for, just out of curiosity?
Staff is currently at halftime, 20 hours, and I think that the commission has talked about logically, an additional 10 hours to three-quarter staff time would help with the current caseload and, and projects. If we move forward with a larger area, or another historic district, or something like that, it's feasible that full-time staff might be what would be necessary, especially if we ever did do anything with a downtown district, or anything like that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. All right, I think our next presenter is not here yet, or...
Captain Brotherton's gonna come up and give you a quick introduction.
Okay, all right. So we're moving on to the Police Department Outreach Update.
Yes.
Welcome.
Oh, I'm Denise Brotherton with the Police Department. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our Community Outreach Division and some of our current community outreach efforts. And I do have a couple guests here with me that will step up here.
Yeah, we see them.
We see them. Sometimes dogs are a little bit like children.
Oh.
Luke? So, hopefully everyone's comfortable with dogs. He's well-trained. First of all, just a little bit about our Community Outreach Division. Right now, it consists of three officers, our employees. We have a Community Outreach Assistant, which is Daisy Torres, which is right here. Our Community Relations Officer with us, Travis Neal. And then, we have our Neighborhood Response Officer, Adam Schmierbach, who unfortunately is at some training this week. Over the past year, we've kind of changed up our Community Outreach Division, wanted to breathe some new life into it, get a little more into the community, which is the whole goal of that division. One thing we've done is we've moved into the rec center, the Lee Rec Center. That's been a great place for us to be. It allows, these guys are both work out of that office. It allows them to have just the interaction with staff, the public that comes in there. We've made sure to not be a security force, but just to be there to interact, to help with some programming, have that open office, especially for the kids, just to come in. It's been great to have Luke around there, too, to get everyone used to him. Some other things we've done with our Community Outreach Assistant, I'm sure most of you are familiar with our previous Outreach Assistant, which was Henry Harper. He left us last spring, and this past fall, we've brought Daisy on board. Some of the things we wanted to do with her position is, previously, our Community Outreach Assistant was very involved in just youth-centered activities, which of course remains a priority for us. But as we reevaluated that division, we noticed we're missing a lot of segments of our community that we need to reach out to, that we need to build better relationships with. Part of what Daisy does now is to build some of those bridges, reach out, find out from those community members what we can do for them, what programming can we do for them, instead of us deciding what they need. She's gotten some great feedback. She'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Another thing we changed is, is the, having the K-9 officer. Usually, our K-9 officers have always just been patrol-based, and just enforcement efforts. We decided Travis was ready for a change in his career, and was very active in the community to begin with. We decided to bring him on board, and bring Luke on board, and it's just been a great addition. People are getting familiar with our program, and it's, we're able to use the K-9 in a different way than just enforcement, which is kind of like how we want to use our officers, too. It's just not about enforcement. And it helps, again, with those youth activities, because not only do adults like them, the kids love them. So Travis has continued to go to the schools. He does lunches at the elementaries. The, the kids just love it, they earn that, and he'll be back up here, you can ask him some questions about that program. Some of the things we have going on right now, as far as our community outreach efforts, is this is an exciting time for us, as the weather gets warmer, gets us out there, it gets our officers out there on foot patrols, out on their bikes. It's just, you know, it's Iowa, when it's winter, they don't want to get out in the cold any more than anyone else. People aren't out in their neighborhoods anyway, but once people are start, they're out, they're barbecuing, they're hanging out in their yards, the kids are out, we try to push those officers, get out there, walk. It's just not about enforcement. Walk around those neighborhoods, just talk to people, the same with the bike officers. We'll join in on some of the already events that go on, like the parties in the park, Juneteenth, Kites for Kids, that will be coming up in April. We like to join in on a lot of those. That's another thing that Daisy does, is she looks out for those community efforts, or events that are going on, and making sure that the officers are aware of those, so that we can join in. Another thing that Daisy does is she's upped a lot of our social media, a lot more, we are seeing much more on Twitter, on our Facebook. I think if you look at our Twitter right now, you'll see Officer Sandifer doing a TikTok video from the Soul Food Dinner the other night. And so, just getting a lot of that positive out there, and she makes sure to get pictures of the officers out at those events. I'm sure you guys have seen our Project Blue Able, the listening posts they've had for those. They'll talk a little bit more about that program. We do have the Citizens Police Academy going on right now. That started in January. That will continue for 10 weeks. That's on Monday evenings. Right now, we have 34 students in that class. On April 11th, at 3:00 PM at Mercer, there's going to be a community awareness on public safety for immigrants and refugees. Another part of our community that Daisy's really zoned in on is, how do we reach refugee and immigrant communities who are often afraid of us, not familiar with us, much time from just their own experiences back in their home countries, and, and what we can do to, to make them familiar with us and some of our laws, so it's not so confusing. Daisy has also partnered with the Senior Center and the Johnson County Emergency Management to present Fighting Fraud classes for seniors. Those started up in February, and they occurred every Friday at 10:00 AM, and those will begin again in April. And again, just those continual, the lunches we do at the schools, the visits of presentations. We have opened up to make it a little easier for people to reach the office by having one email, which is communityrelations@iowa-city.org, so people can email right into the whole group and say, "I have this event," or "Can you come speak to us?" And these guys can amongst themselves decide which officer would be best to respond to that. So I'm gonna turn this over real quick, and have Daisy introduce herself, have Travis introduce himself, and then certainly we'll take any questions.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've never spoken into this before. My name is Daisy Torres. As Captain Brotherton introduced me, I am a recent graduate of the University of Iowa. I graduated last May. I majored in criminology, and I majored in political science. I had a lot of community engagement opportunities as an undergrad, which is what kind of gravitated me towards this job. My sorority, Sigma Lambda Gamma, is historically Latina-based, but we are now a multicultural membership. We are part of the Multicultural Greek Council, which our sorority actually helped establish at the University of Iowa. It was the first one. And getting exposed to all these different communities has always been a really big part. My family came from Mexico, and I was the first one born here in America, so I was the, I was the first one to go through a lot of things, college being one of them. And knowing that sometimes there isn't always support for students like me, first generation made it a goal for me to make sure that they don't have to, they, whatever type of first generation they are, support them in whatever way we can, because they're important to our communities, and making sure that we take steps to make sure they're comfortable, and they know they're appreciated and understand, because it's very important to them, because it's, when you're new, it's, everything's really scary. So that's something I've tried to accomplish with this position, is making sure that our folks that are new to not just America, but also our community, know that they're valued, and we want them to have any sort of opportunities for getting to know us, because we're there for help, and we shouldn't be there just for crisis. We can also be their friends. Yes, and now we, we listen to Travis.
I promise I'll be brief. I'm Travis Neal, the police officer in Iowa City for 11 years. I have a communications associate's degree and a bachelor's in criminal justice. I've had Luke since 2014. Luke is a dual-purpose German Shepherd. He does lots of different jobs for the police department. He's been, we've had a very storied career, very successful career. I'm very proud of what we've done, both on patrol and also in our community outreach outreach ability. Luke is a little unique for police dogs. They're not generally this social, so it would be, we'd be remiss not to take advantage of the fact that he is such a chill, relaxed, social dog. And I've had great success, here, great success with, yeah, we just talked to Brad about what's in that bottle. I'd be remiss if we weren't utilizing his, some of his different talents than what your typical, hey! What your typical police dog has. So, I've enjoyed my time there. Again, I just started in January getting into this position, getting my feet wet. I've had a great time learning. I've had a great time meeting different, different people, different organizations, different groups throughout the community. I'm looking forward to what the next two and a half years have to come with. It's been a pleasure so far, and I'm eager to answer any questions that you may have.
One thing I'd like to point out about Daisy, if you remember, Henry was more in a uniform, much like ours, a little softer. Once Daisy joined us, she pointed out she felt that people would feel more comfortable if she was dressed down, but still, some would be recognized by the city. So as you see, she has the polo, she wears a different, she's got like a blouse that she also wears that identifies, but she has found and has gotten positive feedback when she has spoken to groups, it just makes them feel more comfortable. And then, as she kind of gets some of those relationships, Bill, or programs started, that's when she'll start bringing us in, in our uniforms, because we eventually want people to feel comfortable with our uniform, but we understand, and especially having Daisy point that out to us, it's like, it's not that comfortable for everybody. We miss that. We wear this stuff all the time. So, you know, that's why you'll see she's dressed a little differently than Henry was, but it's, it's worked out very well. And we're open for any questions about any of the events, or these two, if you, if you like.
I've seen Daisy quite a bit in the community, and what I will say is that I believe that you've been received really well by those, so good job at just getting out there. I know it's a little uncomfortable at times putting yourself out there and engaging with people, but you've done a great job. So just keep it up, and I think for a lot of individuals... And I think for a lot of individuals that are maybe of, you know, a certain ethnicity that haven't had such positive reactions, I think you're helping with that, just that communication about, you know, how it doesn't have to be that way or feel that way. And so appreciate that. And then Travis, I know that your friend is here today. Big boy.
He gets called fluffy sometimes. One of us is in really good shape.
Yes, yes. Well, I applaud you for the Project Blue Able. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. So Project Blue Able came about very organically in a meeting that Daisy set up with Access to Independence. As part of my initial training and initiative in coming into this new position, she set up a meeting with Access to Independence. We just met him at a staff meeting, sat down, very organic conversation came up. We were discussing this, and Daisy and I had received an email two or three weeks prior to, from Captain Brotherton, and it was an article about an initiative that the Chief of Police Association in Connecticut had put out called the Blue Envelope Program. And the Blue Envelope Program was a play on their green envelope from 15 years prior. So Connecticut found out from their research that they had an issue with deaf and impaired hearing drivers and interactions with law enforcement. It can cause a litany of different sigmas trying to pull a vehicle over. They don't see the lights, and they don't hear the siren. Well, I can tell you, as a police officer, if I'm trying to pull someone over and they don't see my lights, and I have to hit my siren, that inherently raises the anxiety or the caution in me, and it can raise the level a little bit. So having something as visible and easily identifiable as a large green envelope for the person to, once they recognize, oh, I'm being pulled over, and they stop, and not having that ability to communicate, being able to hold that envelope out the window, it signified to the officer, oh, hey, they just didn't, they can't hear. So they didn't see my lights, that's what took so long. And it lowered that level of anxiety, and it provided better service to not only the citizens, but also to the police officers. It provides some context and some much-needed information immediately, which was super successful. So fast forward to two years ago, Connecticut found out, hey, we have an autistic community that's driving, and the autistic community is being pulled over, and there's having some adverse reactions with law enforcement. So they came out with Project Blue Envelope, and the Blue Envelope was for autistic drivers. Huge success. In doing research with it, talked to Connecticut, they said, this is bar none, the best project we've ever put out from a community relations standpoint, and from an officer's safety, and just a community outreach point of view. Everyone had rave reviews about it. It was a huge success, and it's something that they said, that's, of all the years we've done this for 15-plus years, that is single-handedly the best project we've ever done. So in meeting with Access to Independence, we're talking about this. We're discussing different things. That popped into my head as we're sitting there talking. I turned to Daisy, and I'm like, you know, this sounds a lot like the kind of group that would be interested in like that Blue Envelope Program. They would be able to help us find out how much of a need does Iowa City have for the Blue Envelopes, perhaps? Well, in asking about autistic drivers, Access to Independence, Sarah was like, I love that, that's great, but what about? And then she lames off a litany of different other persons with disability. And it's like, you know what? That's great. That's a great point. Being Iowa City, we are obviously very interested in being as inclusive as possible and making sure that we're providing context in all circumstances. I can tell you, as a police officer for 11 years, I've done field sobriety testing on a person with traumatic brain injury. I would have bet thousands of dollars that the person was intoxicated. They weren't. They had a traumatic brain injury. Until I knew what a traumatic brain injury presented itself as, I would have never thought that. Having that context, having that information at a moment's notice is something that we're really excited about. Access to Independence is really excited about. We're getting some great feedback. Daisy can give you more information about that. But it's a project that happened very organically, very naturally, and we're going to see where it leads us. We're still very much in the planning phase to see how it looks, how it fits, and where it really is going to go. But thank you for asking about it.
Yes, I can tell you, people within the disability world that are providers are really excited that you are working with Access to Independence, Sarah, because it makes all the sense in the world to try to figure out how to really, with the police staff, just understand a little more. CIT has really done great, and I think that's just building upon CIT in a different level. So thanks.
I just want to say that, you know, thank you very much for start reaching out to the community. I just like, start hearing positive reflection. And I saw you guys on the Sudanese, you know, event for the young leader. That was really amazing, because afterward, people was talking about it.
We could have stayed longer.
Yeah, you know, they came late. But all the time, this kind of even go late. But I think that at least you stayed there. It was, that was very nice of you guys coming out and just engaging with them. You are really starting, as you said, area. People from like myself, as immigrants and refugees who come to this country, you know, the way that police act in our back-home country is completely different. And we think that's why police tend to, you know, community tend to be far away from the police. They don't want to interact with them. But, you know, starting going out and building those kind of relationship, it will start to normalize the relationship between the, and improve it between the minority and local enforcement, which is, will be great. And I guess would like to say something that, you know, the young leaders are really now comfortable, and they're saying that they're going to reach out to you again, so you can come on an event that you can answer questions for the young people in the community. But in the same time, I really encourage you to reach out to the association for the, like, the adults people, you know, where, because those people, they have a monthly membership meeting. And if you can just initiate the contact, like, I know that they are not going to come and say, hey, come over, you know, because they don't know how to do that. But if you can just go and say, oh, we understand that you have a monthly meeting. Can we just come and visit you and answer questions? Because, you know, they, at that point, maybe if they have any question, they can ask you unformally, and, you know, this way, they will understand a lot of things that they don't know if it's legal or not legal, or, you know, or this misconception that they have. But thank you again for, like, engaging with the community.
We'll get that information for you, so we can...
Sure, we do that. Thank you. But the last thing I want to ask you, I remember we used to have, if we stop, like, a person of color or anything, and their headlight is not working, we used to give this voucher. I happened to be in a car where the police stopped one person about this, and they did not offer that. They did not give him a ticket or anything, but they did not offer that. And I was like, hey, I hear that you have this.
Yes.
And they said, yeah, but maybe we don't have it anymore.
No, we do still have the bulbs program, and that's good feedback. You know, we'll get new officers hired. We get going in different things, so that's a good reminder to get that back out to our patrol division to get those. But yeah, that's a program we continue. We do still put them out, so I know we're doing it. But that's good feedback to make sure that we're reinforcing that with the officers. They sometimes think, well, I didn't give a ticket, so it was positive.
Yes.
It's that reminder and that continual training we have with them that there's more to it. And just, it's not just about not giving a ticket, but we still want that, want more out of that interaction. That's what bulbs did, was start the conversation, and how can we help? And, you know, take it just beyond that warning. So that is very good feedback. We appreciate that.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for everything you do.
Okay. Luke, wake up. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right. Clarification of agenda items. I will put it out there that there are four proclamations today. And if anyone would like to read one, please let me know.
Just on 8A, would this be a good time to talk about that? Just thanking Charlotte for her service. She's not here today, but welcoming Ryan to our meeting, and glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome. I will say that at the end of our meeting, which is item number 19, I'm not sure if you'll be sticking around that long at the end of the formal meeting. Maybe you'll be able to address the council and just tell us a little bit about yourself, unless you're prepared to do that now.
I'll wait till then, sure.
Great, great. If nothing else on the formal agenda, moving on to info packet February 20. Moving on to info packet February 27.
I did want to note, it's not listed on your pending work session topics, but we do hope to have the Climate Action Commission present at your next council meeting, which is March 24. So that would be the single work session topic.
That'd be good.
I appreciated the IP5, the Strategic Plan Summary Report. Wow. That's packed with information.
I'm reading that between now and next Tuesday. I want it fresh in my mind for a meeting.
Is it even orbiting?
Yeah. And I would say for our strategic plan, that meeting is next Tuesday, the 10th, at 3:00 p.m.? 1:00 p.m.? Yes, this is on my calendar. So come with great ideas. One thing I will say about that, I know that this was something you kind of mentioned. If there's, if anybody has like a major, major thing that they want to present, maybe if you can somehow get it to council before, so we can process it a little bit in staff, that might be worth doing. Sometimes it's overwhelming, trying to process it in the moment. It can be a lot to it. So just be mindful of, if you have that opportunity to do that. If nothing else from IP, February 27, we'll start with council updates, and we're going to start with Counselor Thomas. It's your turn.
Nothing, nothing to report.
Okay.
I have nothing either. No meetings.
I have nothing either. I have nothing.
This is supposed to be what we've already done, right?
Yes.
So there was an EC-COG meeting last week, and they also were kind enough to give those of us who are new an orientation, which even further underscored how much we need to be on there for longer than a year. However, to me, one of the most interesting things that I learned is they are managing watershed districts, including Clear Creek. And this watershed management includes helping them clean up their water, help, sort of working with a whole variety of actors who are, particularly in the Clear Creek, Corvallis also interested. Anyway, it seemed like a really fascinating area of expertise that they have that could be helpful, including for this area as well. A number of us also participated in the employee award ceremony, and as well as attending the DVIP Super Bowl.
Great. Today, I attended the Partnership for Alcohol.
Oh, I am sorry. That is correct. We go back around here.
Any order you wish, mayor. So I'm on the board for the UNESCO City of Literature, and a couple of weekends ago was their One Book, Two Book Festival, which was just a wonderful, that's kind of their main event, one of the main events of the year. So that was all my board service entailed this month. And several of us attended the joint meeting that we had with the School District Board here the day after our last council meeting, where we were reviewing the Form Based Code for the South District. So I think there's, good for us to kind of keep that in mind as that code comes before us in a few months. And then I attended my first meeting of the SEETS Advisory, or the Paratransit Advisory Committee, and just kind of learned a lot and asked some probably really basic questions. But learning about the coordination between the different entities for that service and what they expect in the future. And the ICAD sponsored the State of the Schools event. I know Counselor Thomas was there, and maybe others there, last Thursday morning, which was just a really interesting discussion with representatives from the University of Iowa, Solon School District, Iowa City Community School District, Clear Creek and Manah, and Fred Newell was presenting as well. And so it was just a discussion, a conversation about schools and somewhat sort of workforce development, and what students and workers of the future need. So that was pretty cool.
I'll just make a quick comment on the One Book, Two Book. I had the opportunity to go to the evening event where the students read their work. My great niece was presenting from one of the schools. And let me tell you, the writing of these kids is phenomenal.
Agreed.
It was just amazing, from little short poems that were incredible to some stories that I don't know where they get their imagination. And some of them a little bizarre, but just incredibly talented, incredibly talented.
I have to say, I went to that, and I was super impressed by all the students. And some were very theatrical. And I think we started with first graders. It was amazing. I was super impressed, so kudos to them. Today, I went to the Partnership for Alcohol and Safety, and there's a lot of things that has happened in there. One of the things that I wanted to just let counselors know is that they do want to, and we have it on our work session, for the alcohol in the parks discussion. They want to kind of just be aware when that takes place, so that they can come and be a part of that discussion. As of now, there is nothing more than I'll report about that. There will be next, so our next council meeting, remember, it will not be on the third Tuesday. It'll be on the fourth Tuesday, which will be the 24th due to the spring break. So just wanted to remind people about that. Other than that, I have no more updates that I wanted to give. Anything else that we want to discuss before we...
I did want to mention, I didn't have a chance to squeeze it in when we had the historic preservation discussion, but I did attend the, I think it was part of the Black History Month, presentation at the library. It was kind of a joint presentation with Stephanie and Jessica, representing the effort on the designation of, you know, Tate Arms and the, I'm forgetting the name of the property on Iowa Avenue, but the two properties that were associated with housing for African-American students before they had access to the residence halls and so forth. And it was a great presentation. And I really loved how, and I think this was a theme for me, anyway, with the historic, some of the work of historic preservation this year. This is kind of interweaving of historic, either whether it's historic issues with the log cabins, civil rights with Tate Arms and the Iowa Avenue project, different ways in which historic preservation is integrating with other concerns we have in Iowa City. And I think that's a very enriching combination. It was a beautifully staged event. I had a great time.
Awesome. Anything else? If not, we will be back at 7:00 p.m.